Good evening. I would like to call this August twentieth, two thousand and twenty four School Board Regular Meeting to Order. The time is now six oh one. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. And I will lead us in the pledge. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Charlie. Here. Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Colonel Cole.
Here.
Colonel Foster.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
Your Doran?
Here.
Maple?
Here.
Marotti?
Here.
Sanderson?
Here.
Arty?
Here.
The board has a quorum.
The next item on our agenda is to welcome our new members to the board. So we will start with our Aylston representative. We would like to welcome Colonel Timothy Foster, or Tim Foster, to to the board. I'm sorry, guys, getting back on my game. Colonel Tim Foster is the three fifty fourth's Mission Support Group Commander at Aylston Air Force Base. Colonel Foster is originally from Florida and graduated from the University of Florida in two thousand. He entered active duty service in two thousand and one by serving at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas. He is married to his amazing wife, Michelle. Together, they have one son, Jackson, who is here in Fairbanks with them and is entering his junior year at UAF. Colonel Foster has been in the Air Force for twenty-three years and six months and has lived abroad in Europe and Asia for over ten of those years. This is his second duty assignment in Alaska. The Fosters loved their earlier time in Alaska so much that they officially became Alaskan residents in two thousand and thirteen. It is such a pleasure to welcome you to the board. Our next item on the agenda is welcoming our new FNA representative, Ms. Melissa Charlie. Ms. Charlie is the Executive Director of the Fairbanks Native Association. She is from Minto and prior to becoming the Executive Director of FNA, spent eleven years as the Deputy Director overseeing FNA's educational programs. Johnson O'Malley had Start and the Tribal Home Visiting. Her role at FNA, she has partnered with the Fairbanks North Starborough School District to improve educational outcomes for Alaskan native and American native students for over a decade. Ms. Charlie is a graduate of Lathrop High School and has three grown children who all graduated from the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. Ms. Charlie is also the parent of a current second grader enrolled in our district. It is such a pleasure to welcome you to the board, Ms. Charlie. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine and not requiring public discussion of the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Your Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Your Burgess?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Arty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is public comments on report and non-agenda items. During this section of the agenda, the School Board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This time is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will make note of the topics, though no official action will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and potential action. Board members will not be responding to comments or questions made by the public, but may ask questions of the speaker for clarifying purposes only. Concerned citizens should initially discuss matters with the superintendent or designee first. After the superintendent or designee has heard concerns, then it may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time that the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the School Board Office by four P M. the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Those who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. Public testimony will be heard from citizens in the order in which they have signed up. A sign-in sheet is available in the boardroom prior to the start of the meeting for those who have not already signed up in advance. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name, spell their last name, and state their area of residence. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Danette Peterson up to the dice.
Thank you, Danette Peterson, Fairbanks F E A President. On August sixth and seventh, I had the opportunity to welcome approximately forty new educators to our district during the New Teacher Academy. I truly appreciated the district providing this opportunity for me and other colleagues to connect with so many of our new educators. I look forward to connecting with the remaining new educators that I have not yet met, and I welcome all to our community. I also appreciated the opportunity to partner with the district to provide professional growth opportunities that are relevant and impactful during our recent district-wide P D. Day on Friday, the ninth. Four of the sessions offered were specifically requested and supported by F E A. members and were attended by seventy educators. I look forward to working with the district in the future on providing other professional growth opportunities. On another note, this year, we are facing unprecedented overcrowded classrooms. Thirty-two in a kindergarten class, thirty-six in a fourth grade class, and forty-five in a middle school class, to name a few. Many of these positions were posted later due to budget uncertainties that were beyond the control of the school district. But the bottom line is that, given the national shortage of teachers, we don't have enough qualified teachers to meet our needs. Some of these vacancies are being filled by subs and emergency certs, who we are truly grateful for, but also recognize will need additional support to successfully navigate the challenges that such large classes present. It is difficult for teachers to provide the individual and small group instruction time needed to raise reading and math scores when there are more students than desks to seat them at. It is also difficult to provide the social and emotional support needed and manage behaviors in classes that large. Nonetheless, come January, our elected officials will ask us to be accountable for student test scores without holding themselves accountable for the large class sizes and the high turnover teacher rates, which directly impact student achievement. My goal this year as F E A. President is to work with Dr. Minor and you, members of the School Board, to focus on the retention of our current teachers by implementing ways to lessen their burden so their jobs are tenable. We need to provide support to classroom teachers so that a single student behavior can be addressed without disrupting the learning for all. We need to work together to support teachers with mandatory trainings and to find ways to support teachers with the Alaska Reads Act requirements. We need to support teachers who are experiencing challenges with licensure due to deeds, staffing shortages, and we must find ways to support our special education teachers so that they can get their prep time and lunch while complying with mandates.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you for your.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next up, I have Marilyn Bach. I said Bachan.
It's Buchanan, but that's okay. Well, thank you for letting the community come and share concerns, and that's why I'm here. Research shows that.
Sorry to interrupt. Would you mind stating your first name, spelling?
Marilyn Buchanan.
Then you spell your, or your last name.
Yeah, B U C H A N A N. Research shows that LGBTQ teens consider suicide at about four times the national rate for all adolescents. My question for you, the School Board, is will affirming the LGBTQ lifestyle help stabilize our youth so they have happy, healthy lives? Or will affirming and promoting this behavior cause more and more children to be drawn into a darkness that leads to depression and mental health issues? What if trying to live like a boy with a girl body made up of billions of girl cells actually causes confusion and trauma? Another issue related to this. A large number of citizens in this country hold the belief that homosexuality is wrong and harmful. Is it right to push all things homosexual on their children? Would you approve of bulletin boards advocating abstinence? And a month set aside to promote abstinence, a behavior that actually does promote health and future happiness? Would you approve of a required reading list that included books talking about and supporting abstinence? Bullying should never be tolerated. But in my opinion, promoting the LGBTQ lifestyle should not be tolerated either. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Janet Ferris. And Ernest Kincaid.
Hello, I'm Janet Ferris of North Pole, F A R R I S.
And Ernest Kincaid of North Pole, K I N C A D E.
K, as he likes to be called, and I are the school liaison officers. I am at Fort Wayne, right? K is at Aylston Air Force Base. And we would like to bring to your attention that transitions can be very difficult for all of us, right? And students have gone through their transitions again this school year, be it from grade to grade, classroom to classroom, even school to school. And we are here to give. And we are here to give thanks, many thanks, to the North Pole Chamber of Commerce, USO, the North Pole Middle School, and North Pole High School Military Family Live Counselors, who, along with K and I, on the first day of school at the North Pole Middle School and at the North Pole High School, welcomed our Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High School students to become North Pole Middle and North Pole High students. And we also, because we are inclusive, welcomed all students, and it was wonderful seeing those happy faces, those concerns turning to smiles, and the parents really cheering that school is back in session.
Did what she said.
Any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you both for your testimony. Oh, was that one choice, or Ms. Anderson? Sorry. We do have a question.
It's not a question, but I want to thank you for your efforts also. As hearing from students who have made that transition, they felt welcome, and they feel that they are going to have a great school year, so thank you for that.
And we've got another, Mr. Doran.
And there's a question. For our listening public and the benefits, could you just comment on the services you provide? I mean, we have schools that have a high number of military students, but we have them scattered throughout our schools, so your service is brought more broadly to those families that might be interested.
As I like to say, school liaison officers are almost your best-kept secret for military families. We do, we have many duties that we have, just like our military does. Some of the duties, I will speak of some, and then K will speak of some too, because he needs to talk. One of the things, we do help with transitions. As you know, military families move about every two years, so we are there to help them transition to the next duty stations, no matter what military branch it is, to connect them with the next school liaison officer, to give them all the information they need to know about education, and probably even things they don't need to know. But we want to make sure those families are prepared before they leave to know what's available at their next duty station, okay?
All right. So another thing we do is actually partnership with the school district and the community. We try to connect the military students with the base, right? Whether that is volunteering in the schools, out in the community, or internship programs with the base. We also connect with legislation as well, so we are heavily involved in trying to drive legislation for education that benefits all students, all right? That just address military stuff specific, that just kind of wing over and go right into every other student as well. So we are, as we are, like you said, we are school liaisons for either the Army or the Air Force, but we're also a joint service, so any service, anywhere includes the Coast Guard. So we're reaching out now to Coast Guard folks, and we are heavily into Purple Star Schools. So as you guys may know, for the state, Fairbanks has the most Purple Star Schools in the state. So we pre-purno did well, and the school district receives that well. If we could get the rest of the school district to catch up, we'll be okay.
Follow-up.
And one more thing, we do support, yes, we support our public school district, but we also support our home schools and our private schools, and we value our partnerships for the military and the community. And you'll see us partner together with different organizations, because the military families are our families here in the community. So what they can benefit from, so can our community families, so we like to bring them all together to understand each other's lifestyles, bring those gates down, so we know that we are all as one.
Just follow-up, if, in terms of parents, especially those who are scattered throughout our community at our different schools, if they wanted to get in touch with you, what's the best way for them to do that?
We do have emails, and we also have phone numbers, and we also have websites for ourselves where you can find our information also.
Yes, just go to the district's website, the Georgia Sanger website, Military Connected, the Military Connect is, what is it, coordinator site on the district, we're on there as well, so.
And many of the schools themselves on their websites have our information also, so they can connect us to the families. And the school district is very, the schools are very good, knowing that if families are leaving, that they'll give us their information so that we can help them ease that transition to their next duty station, or even school to school.
Yeah. Or just shine a light in the sky, just like the Batmobile, so we'll be there, we'll see it.
You've got another one from Ms. Marotti.
Thanks. As a veteran of the United States Coast Guard, I am super excited to hear that we're going to tap into that service. If you could please keep us informed of that initiative, and please let me know if there's anything I can do to help.
Now, thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Gail McBride.
Gail McBride with Moms for Liberty, McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E, and I'm from Fairbanks. We all have a common goal of the safety of all children. This has been my motivation in sending information to all of you in the last month or so. Throughout the month of July, I have emailed articles and interviews by medical experts from around the world with the most current research on what is called gender-affirming care. You have heard the leaked discussions from the World Psychiatric Association of Transgender Health discussing their concerns of the ethical violations, knowing these minors and many times their parents cannot consent to the treatments they are offering. You have heard that with the release of Dr. Hillary Cass's report on the lack of evidence for the treatments they are offering. Consequently, the largest transgender clinic in England was shut down. You have heard what is called gender-affirming care is being called the largest medical scandal in history. You have heard that a whistleblower in Texas at the nation's largest children's clinic has risked his entire career as a surgeon after seeing these youth being mutilated, sterilized, and devastated by these abusive experiments on children. You have heard of the lawsuits being filed by detransitioners, who, after years of the treatments and mutilated bodies, are suing the doctors who did this to them and those advising them on this path. Entire law firms are emerging to handle the increase in these suits. Schools should be aware of this fast-growing legal issue. Often, in their stories, these young people tell of teachers and school counselors unqualified in the psychiatric condition of gender dysphoria, encouraging them in this path of destruction. In light of all this information, I am calling for all gender ideology material to be removed immediately from every library and classroom in our district. If the district decides to continue to provide this material, you have the obligation to provide legal, medical, and psychological studies stating the benefit of this material outweighs the information you have been provided to the parents. These children are not your children, and now it is documented by reputable experts in the field that gender ideology and the treatments offered are experiments on children.
Thank you for your testimony. And last, we have, I'm going to go with Anita Burrows.
And this is my hometown, although I've lived all over Alaska, I attended different locations of school here. And I want to point out, I just want to, just want to give you some truth and facts, and you could think about it, because this is the first time I've been to a school board Just in my lifetime, so much has changed. Francis Crick first was able to blow the DNA of an amoeba up to cover a large wall and take a look at DNA in my lifetime. And the DNA for an amoeba is tiny compared to just a little bit compared to human DNA. And he went like, one strand, not the whole set, but one strand couldn't have happened by random chance anywhere in our galaxy. This is just, you know, an amazing thing to look at. And Bill Gates said it's a microscopic computer program, and he had details about it from that perspective. And another couple of Nobel Prize-winning mathematicians put it in the odds of probability. For one strand for an amoeba, could it have happened in like four billion years in our galaxy and somehow got transported here? And how did it, the whole living cell get put together? And the answer had forty thousand, something ten to the forty thousandth, that's forty thousand zeros in the answer. And since then, they've looked at this closer, and they're going like, DNA is actually a microscopic 3D printer of how to build you, how to put those photo sensors in the retina of your eye, you know, from, and there's like twenty amino acids that build up all of nature, just depending on, you know? And you get half from your mom, half from your dad, you descended from. When I was at UAF as a kid, when the professor, you know, anthropology, what's that, I'll sit, you know, I'll take that for an elective, I had to object when they were saying millions of years, and then a man appeared, dinosaurs became extinct, and I, and an embryo in this bag of fluid appears to have gill plates, you know, forming on the side of its head. I stood up and said, but it's, it's, you know, it's in a, it's got, it's oxygen and nutrients coming to it through an umbilical cord, you know, appears to be gill plates? I mean, therefore, we evolved from fish. They have now found and classified, I know I heard the guy that classified sixteen different types of dinosaurs.
Burrows, I'm sorry, that's time.
To put them together, and there were soft tissue in over two hundred specimens.
Ms. Burrows.
The first time they were ever put together, not possible for it to even be one million years old, so.
Ms. Burrows, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off now. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. The next item on our agenda is the Borough Assembly Report. Savannah Fletcher, the presiding officer of the Borough Assembly, will provide the assembly report, and I'm assuming possibly online.
Yes, I am here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, school board, happy start of the school year. Savannah Fletcher here, as you said, presiding officer of the Borough Assembly, and sorry if you hear my son in the background. Just a really quick update for you all, I don't think there's anything monumental that's been changing in regards to the school district lately. I just wanted to say, we do have an upcoming appropriation for $2 million for the North Pole High School heating system to upgrade that, and I know that had been a big capital maintenance concern of both of our bodies this spring, so that's a happy update. Of course, we still have to vote and formally approve that appropriation, but I anticipate that being something we all see the need for. Otherwise, I'm happy to take specific questions, but nothing too pressing comes to mind. We'll be doing some potential research on vote-by-mail, maybe, if that gets approved this week by the assembly, and if so, we would have each of the city clerks weigh in, and it would probably make sense to have someone with the school board weigh in on that year-and-a-half-long process as well. But that's all I have, thanks.
I'm not seeing any questions for you. Thank you so much for calling in and providing us with that report.
Thank you, have a good rest of your evening.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is our advisory members' reports and comments. And this is a time for any of our advisory members to provide specific comments, and this was for newer members. Oftentimes, our meetings run long, and board members at the end of a meeting have the opportunity to provide comments, and oftentimes, our advisory members didn't because they have to go back and they have early mornings. So we moved this to the top of our agenda to make sure you would have an opportunity. So if anybody has, or I can go down the line. You don't have to, it doesn't look like either of our colonels have one tonight, Ms. Charlie, and it's okay if you don't.
No, I'll just say, it's really glad to be here, thank you all. That's it, thank you. Bye, see you.
Thank you. Next, we have board committee reports. I know we haven't had committees, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shannon.
That's okay.
It's a long dais now, and I totally spaced that we have you down there. Go ahead, Mr. Shannon.
All right, well, I just want to say I'm really happy to be back here, it's my second meeting here, really excited for this coming school year. Very happy to hear that they're putting a new heating system in. Unfortunately, like Dr. Minert said to me a minute ago, I will be graduated, unfortunately, but new students can enjoy that, and I'll bet you that's going to be really, really good, because we've been having a lot of problems there. But yeah, I'm just really excited to be here, ready to get to know all of you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, the next item is our board committee reports. Probably are none, since we haven't met yet, but is anyone looking for members? Ms. Burnett?
The family engagement committee is looking for members. We have it posted up on our website. If you'd like to get involved with that, please get yourself signed up and apply, and we'll get you added, and we'd love to get our meetings going.
Mr. Doran?
Just regarding the budget committee, it looks like right now we have a full committee, maybe a couple appointees, but I do want to encourage people to, if they're interested in the budget committee, to apply, because sometimes things change for people, and it's nice to have somebody ready to go. And I will say that the budget committee will be meeting multiple times in October, because we need to get a jumpstart on this whole process. So it'll get fully going the first of October, several meetings, and then into November, so.
Not seeing any other committee reports, which brings us next to the president's report. I would like to give a warm welcome back to all of our district's students, families, and educators. The start of the new school year has always been one of my favorite, as a, you know, a teacher myself. It's a time full of possibilities and adventures, or new adventures, and just the anticipation of what's to come. I'd like to thank all of our educators and staff who work so tirelessly to prepare our schools to be the warm, welcoming places for our students that they have been over the past four days. At the beginning of August, the district held its annual, or it's now second annual Jump Start Music Camp. It took place at Ryan Middle School, and we had eighty-one eager new musicians participating. That's almost double the amount of students that we had in the program last year. The camp is only possible through numerous community partnerships, and the district would like to thank the generous community partners who donated the funds to make this camp possible for a second year, in no particular order. We had Design Alaska, Phyllis Pendegras, DMD, the family of Dwight Morris, Fairbanks Nissan, and Les Nichols, Fairbanks Concert Association as part of their Band Together fundraising campaign, the Fairbanks Symphony Orchestra, the Bill Stoker Foundation, and Ken Ross Fort Knox. We would also like to say a huge thank you to the staff members willing to spend part of their summer making the Jump Start Camp the monumental success that it was. And my apologies if I don't get your name right. We have Ms. Liesel Whitgriff, who is the camp director and coordinator, Katie Bates, who did violas, Kennedy Adams did percussion, Gwendolyn Brazier did the bass, Jessica Curtis did trombones, Sue Waltman did our cellos, as well as Nick McGraw, Melanie Bionelik. did trombones, Sue Waltman did our cellos, as well as Nick McGraw, Melanie Bionelik did flutes, Courtney, Melikos was on trumpets and Jay Milton was on our woodrins. And I think I also skipped Sunafina Dinar, who did violins. Lastly, a huge thank you to our volunteer extraordinaire Erin Genoso, who tirelessly worked to both raise the funds to put on the camp and also help to make the camp so successful, both this year and last. The Jump Start Camp is a great way for incoming middle school students who are new to instrumental music to select an instrument and have the opportunity to receive instruction on that instrument prior, prior to starting the school year in band or orchestra. We are so grateful to everyone involved in making this camp a success now year after year. And it's a short report, so my last bit is, the primary election is today. It's only six thirty-six and the polls are open until eight PM. So if you're listening online and haven't voted yet, please go vote. You are going to have multiple opportunities in the next few months to vote and this is just one of them, but it's just as important as any of the others. Make your voice heard. With that, we will now turn it to Dr. Minert for the Superintendent Report.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy. I'd also like to welcome back, welcome our community back to another school year. We're excited to be back in school and, you know, it's just been a positive start with all of our students and our staff. I'd also like to welcome Melissa Charlie, our FNA Executive Director, who's our new Advisory Member, and then Colonel Timothy Foster. Would also like to thank Melissa for finding members for all of our Board Committees. That's a nice addition for this year and we're looking forward as we're filling out our Board Committees to having FNA's voice within those committees. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had some wonderful professional development sessions and collaborative opportunities together. As Ms. Peterson noted, we were able to coordinate and collaborate with FEA on some of those sessions, but then would also like to thank Teaching and Learning for organizing that back to school day at Herring. We had over ninety sessions available that day, so a lot of choice for our educators and I think it was a wonderful day of learning for everyone involved. I'd like to thank the Positive Picketers that welcomed that event. They braved the rain, which was amazing. It was a rainy day that day, so it was great to see so many smiling faces welcoming back our educators. Would like to thank True North again for providing coffee and muffins for all of our educators that day. The Fairbanks Chamber of Commerce for helping organize the picketers to be out there with us. And the UAF Athletic Department and Student Athletes for being at our schools on the first day. I know I was at a lot of, a lot of different schools on the first day and it's amazing to see the students' faces light up as they see the student athletes there, welcoming them back into school. Additionally, it was so great to see so many families supporting their children through the back to school events last week and then also showing up on the first day of school, walking their children to their classrooms. One of our goals for this year is family engagement and I know we have great family engagement within our schools and we look to build upon that success. Before I report out on a few things for this school year, I do want to do, touch back to summer. We had some amazing summer programs that happened and I'd like to highlight those for the Board and the community. So throughout the summer, our students were actively engaged in learning through June and we deeply appreciate the support from our internal and external partners. Their contributions were invaluable to the success of our programs. We had over fifteen hundred students involved in our summer programs and over four hundred high school credits were earned. And so it really is a valuable opportunities for students to continue their learning throughout the summer and then also earn back credits that they may have missed or wanted to accelerate going into the new school year. This list is gonna get long, but I wanted to thank all our partners that help us with our summer programs. So we extend heartfelt thanks to Costco for providing a shop card for student snacks, Spirit of Alaska Federal Credit Union for donating bikes, helmets and locks, Stars of Gold Readers for their generous book donations, Fairbanks Academy and Community Theater for donating snacks for students, the University of Alaska Fairbanks Cooperative Extension and the Fairbanks Food Bank for providing go bags filled with food and nutrition activities, Fairbanks North Star Borough for offering discounted field trip rates and access to the public library, Gold Dredge Number Eight for providing discounted field trip rates and volunteers and policing for supplying helmets for all Twenty First Century East Camp attendees. And, you know, when I read that list, it's amazing the amount of community partners that we have available that are willing to generously donate to our school and help our students. So thank you very much to all of those partners. Wanted to highlight a few awards that the district received over the summer. Our district was selected as the recipient of this year's Title III Distinguished District Award for Alaska for our work with multilingual learners. If you remember last year, Arctic Light won a similar award for our work with multilingual learners and our district has been recognized for their work. And so congratulations to all of our staff around the district and specifically in our ML Department that works with those students. Additionally, the district was recognized for the National School Public Relations Association for its podcast. So thank you to Josh and Rebecca for the production in that and it's nice to see it recognized on the national stage. Just today, we heard about an award for Fanta over at West Valley. Congratulations to Fanta. She was selected as ESP for the entire state and so that is an incredible honor and achievement and she'll be recognized for that tomorrow. And so really proud of her accomplishments there and the work that she does with her students on a regular basis. Turning to strategic planning, our strategic, strategic planning work started last spring. We had a community survey as well as community focus groups that collected a number of pieces of data from our community. Education Elements spent the summer reviewing that data and will host two in-person sessions next week with two, two strategic planning teams. One is our Steering Team. Their initial focus will be narrowing down the main pillars for the strategic plan and starting to narrow in on what those main components will be and provide that advice to the Board on what those components might be based on the initial data. And then the Facilities Team will be working on developing a framework for our continued conversations on school consolidations. And so those are just the first of many opportunities that those teams will be involved in, but they're gonna kick off that work in person next week here in the boardroom. And so we're looking forward to that kickoff to the in-person strategic planning for the year. Also want to note that there'll be a number of community touchpoints as we work through the strategic planning process. So I imagine as we narrow down the pillars and as we move along on the facilities conversations that we'll have additional focus groups or community interactions to get people's feedback on how the strategic plan is moving. Wanted to provide the Board with an update on enrollment. While we're still early in the ten day count process, it doesn't fortunately appear that many of our schools are coming in under projections. So there was a lot of talk about large class sizes at the elementary level early on, but unfortunately, in a lot of those instances, that was on paper only and hasn't been realized with students actually showing up in schools. And so we are down a bit across the district, but there are pockets of large class sizes that do remain in schools like University and Pearl Creek. We're actively working on solutions to mitigate those large class sizes in those schools. We're also taking a look at other potential movements to make sure that there's equity between schools and that's something that we do on a yearly basis during the ten day count. For a transportation update, as we've experienced in past years, the number of bus routes compared to the spring to the fall normally decrease and we're also experiencing that this year, we're currently at eighty-five routes for the school district. So not as bad as what we've been in past years in terms of a starting point, but certainly down from the ending point in the spring. Durham has pulled TDY drivers from other states to help us out and we're hopeful that as summer operations and tourism and construction ends, that we'll see a return to some of the drivers that we had at the end of last year. Additionally, there's been some talk about notification systems between our school buses and other entities within the, within the community. And happy to report that Alaska Five One One has built in alerts for school buses in their specific app that also talks to the Waze Navigation App. This works, to get these notifications, this works when a driver is using the Five One One app that you can find on app stores and is activated by, by the user setting their phone into drive mode. When it is in drive mode, there's audible alerts available for drivers and that allows them to know when they're entering a zone that a school bus is in. And so DOT worked on rolling out that Five One One notification system this summer and we're just starting to test it here in district and we'll see how other entities might take advantage of those alerts here in the future. One of our goals this year is improving family engagement and one tool we'll utilize for that is Parent Square. Hopefully at this point in time, most people in the room have heard about that. We feel like that's going to be a game changer in terms of the two-way communications that are available between our schools, our district and home. One of the things I've consistently heard since joining the district is that we have too many apps and options for the ways that we had communicated with our families in the past. And so this is really an effort to consolidate that down and simplify it for families, especially when they have multiple students at multiple different schools. And so we're seeing a lot of great communications go out from our schools and our teachers to families and look forward to engaging with families on that. And I'd like to close tonight's report with thanking all of our educators for choosing the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. We know you have a choice when it comes to your employment in school districts and we're just super thankful that you choose Fairbanks as your place of employment. We value your service to our students and the community and we really do look forward to the head, forward to the year ahead together. I'd also like to say a huge thank you to the families that trust, trust us with your most precious resource, your children. We love working alongside of all of them to support their dreams and aspirations and we welcome all students. And I want to give one last shout out to our ADC staff. I talk a lot about relentless support with our district office and our executive directors and I just love that the way that that is showing up. And one way that's showing up is them filling in with the Nutrition Services Department in our schools. Our Nutrition Services Department is down approximately twenty individuals. And so folks from our district office and the School Board are filling a need and many of our schools preparing food for breakfasts and lunches. And so thank you for our staff for taking their time out of their busy schedules because that only makes their day longer at the end of their day. Their, their work doesn't go away, but they really are stepping up and showing that relentless support for schools. So thank you. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the Board for the consideration for extending my contract through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. I feel very honored to be in this position and just love the work that I get to do on a daily basis. So thank you for that and happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you for your report. Just a couple of questions on the enrollment. And I know we're just a week in, less than a week actually, and we'll have a better number for our September meeting. But are we, when you say we're down slightly, could you give us a better picture of numbers? Are we hundred, two hundred, fifty? I mean, and I, and I do recognize we tend to continue to pick up students, especially after Labor Day and then into October.
Yeah.
Full count.
Yeah. So I, I'm thankful that you prefaced that because we do continue to see a growth in our student count on a daily basis as we continue into this ten day count. We're in probably the three to four hundred range student, down students. Part of that is with best, we expected a slight decrease in best. We're also seeing some large decreases at our military connected schools. I know Anderson Crawford, Tanana and Arctic Light are, are trending down, which is something we've seen in the past couple of years, as well as Hunter also has a large shortage this year as of right now. Now, things can change a lot within the next, you know, month, month and a half before count. And so we're hopeful that students are gonna continue to trickle back into our schools and, and I'm, you know, I'll continue to update the Board as we have refreshed enrollment rates at future Board meetings.
Ms. Marotti then, Mr. Doran?
Thank you for that report, thorough as usual. I wanted to piggyback off of Mr. Doran's question and your answer about the enrollment being low, specifically at Hunter. I would love to know why, if you, not right now, but follow up and just let us know.
Yeah, we're curious about that too. And so if we're able to find any credible information as to what some contributing causes that might be, we'll share that with the Board. Yep.
Mr. Doran?
And two questions regarding the bus situation and I know you're looking at a possible report from Durham to the Board. But a question in terms of the TDYs that they pulled to fill in slots, hoping to fill them later. If I remember correctly, last year they did that and it's, it's been a common for whoever the contractor has been this time of year. But I'm particularly interested in terms of Durham's plan because last year, I believe, when the TDYs needed to return to their regular routes in other districts, we then wound up having to cut. So do they have something in place so that we can continue at least the minimum number of routes that we're starting with?
I think that's the million dollar question, whether or not they'll be able to sustain those routes. It's usually coupled along with hunting season that also comes in the interior at about the same time. And so oftentimes, what happens is that they do have a plan to fulfill all of the routes available that we're asking for them at that time. But with higher than normal call out rates during hunting season, sometimes we are forced to cut routes. And so we're hopeful that that won't materialize this year, but that's always a possibility. And we certainly have route combinations planned if, if that's a necessity. And so we truly won't know until the middle of the month, until middle of September, until that happens. And, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, people will, will continue to show up to work and, you know, they won't call out, but, but we are at that mercy at times where there's Hulk, high call outs during hunting season.
Follow up to that one. Yeah, I look forward to Durham telling us what they're planning to do so we don't have a repeat from last year. And if I'm correct, we have a targeted, is about, is it another ten or eleven routes that our hope is to run this year?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we have Ms. Charlie. And then, did you want another one?
I can wait.
Ms. Charlie?
I also have a transportation question. What is the status of transportation this year for Hutch and Effie?
For Hutch, Hutch is a school, like a school of choice and so we don't provide direct transportation to Hutch, but I am happy to say that we have shuttles going between Lathrop High School and Hutch, which is incredibly helpful for Lathrop students to access those CTE opportunities. We're hopeful that that will boost the numbers of Lathrop students, taking advantage of those opportunities. Effie is also a school of choice and so as of right now, there's no transportation options provided by the school district to Effie. We're hopeful, you know, in the future as potentially drivers and routes are added back, that that's something that we could take a look at, but not available at this time.
Mr. Doran?
And also on bussing and the alert system, I'll be interested to hear from Durham specifically on what is the communication happening between the buses and traffic on the highway for the highway stops? Since I know last spring, they told us they were testing then, they had pilots and was planning to get it going this year. If we're just in a pilot stage or when will it be fully, when do they expect it to be fully operational and what the pilot is actually doing? be fully operational and what the pilot is actually doing? It's a...
Yeah, so that's, that's part of what I was trying to explain is that those alerts created by DOT interface with our Durham buses are available for any entities or community members out there that want to take advantage of those notifications that come from the bus. So, like I explained in the 511 app, those notifications are sent out. And if there's companies or entities or community members that are interested in seeing those notifications from our buses, once they enter that geo-fenced area, that is currently available to them today.
Okay. And I'm not sure who would answer this question, but we do know there's a, at least I'm very aware that there's a real community concern on the safety of bus stops along the Richardson and Steeze highways with the high increase of ore hauling trucks. And I'd be very interested in knowing, I'm sure parents are, are, are those entities, Black Gold, Transport, Kim Ross, are they actually operationally taking advantage of what's there? And so look and be able to reassure parents on that safety front, or if they've got concerns, who they would talk to. So Durham is our contractor. I'm assuming they're the ones we ask if they have talked outreach to, what are those conversations to make sure that connection is happening?
Yeah, certainly. And we've also reached out to Black Gold to see if they're interested in taking advantage of those notification systems. I imagine there's other entities as well that I'm hopeful that will take advantage of those. I truly think that the call for parents would be to those entities though that they're concerned about. You know, we're doing the part on our end, Durham Transportation and DOT to provide a notification system. Now it's on the entities on the other side to take advantage of those notifications that are going out. And so I think we're all in the same place that we're very supportive and, you know, concerned about student safety and trying to do everything that we can to ensure that students make it safe from home to school. And so I think this is a positive step forward in that light and, you know, this is fresh off of being launched a couple of weeks ago from DOT. And so we'll see, you know, how this materializes in the community and if there's additional components built onto it.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes, Superintendent Minarch, I just had a quick thought about the transportation component for our SMART students. Do we have a solution in place yet? Or are we, what are we looking at for, to meet those needs?
Yeah, unfortunately, the board did budget for that solution, but given the driver shortage that we currently have, we aren't able to deliver that route at this time. But we're hopeful as drivers come back that that's a route that will be added to SMART this, this school year.
And would that be a van or a bus?
Currently, it'll be a van, or sorry, excuse me. Currently, it will be a bus. I don't believe Durham has any vans available left in Fairbanks, but it is something that Mr. Hinton has been in conversations with Durham about.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any further questions. Thank you for that report, Dr. Minarch. Our next items are action items and new business. And we will start with the Alaska Association of School Boards Director nomination for Ms. Melissa Burnett. Nominations for the Association of Alaska School Boards, ASB Board of Directors requires an official action by the school board on which the nominee is a member. The application packet of the board member, Ms. Melissa Burnett, is before the board for consideration. And, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that before we make a motion, Ms. Burnett, you would need to leave the dais as you would have an obvious conflict of interest. But if you would like to speak, I think about, no, they're not allowed to say anything? All right. We will lean on the two who have done this before. Ms. Burnett, we will see you shortly. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the endorsement of Melissa Burnett as a nominee to the Association of Alaska School Boards Board of Directors.
Second.
Oh, so many.
Is there any board discussion? Mr. Doran.
I just would like to speak in support of this. I've been on the Board of Directors, ASB, for the last three years and I think Ms. Burnett would bring an important voice to the table. I do want to also recognize that Ms. Anderson has been serving on the ASB Board of Directors as well. And though her term here is ending, she has been a tremendous participant and contributor to the association and has been a voice for Fairbanks at that table, along with the, the whole state. So, I want to thank Ms. Anderson for her service in that regard and, as I said, be very supportive of Ms. Burnett's nomination to this. It is up to AASB and their nominating committee and then the delegates to select the Board of Directors, but this is the first step in that process. They, any nominees must have the support of their local school board. And, and Ms. Burnett has been an active participant in ASB activities and conferences and trainings and conversations with legislators, legislators, et cetera. And I think, as I said, her voice at the state level in the association would be very beneficial for the association as well as for our Fairbanks School District.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes, I'd be in support of Melissa Biename from our board. She has time and time again stepped up, showed leadership abilities at that level. Her compassion and her presence in our local community can be nothing but an asset. Thank you.
Not, oh, Mr. Doran?
Just for the listening public and knowledge about the process, as I said, this will go to, if the board here approves the nomination, it will go to the nominating committee for AASB. They will then make their recommendations and will go to the delegate assembly that's held during the annual School Boards Association Conference in November. And it's the delegate assembly of all the membership who actually selects the Board of Directors. So, that'll be the timeline on this.
Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster.
Yes.
Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Charlie.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Maple.
Yes.
Dr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Marotti.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Yes. While we wait for Ms. Burnett to return, we will ask Mr. Doran to leave. Now we have the nomination of Mr. Timothy Doran. Nominations for the Association of Alaska School Boards, Board of Directors require official action by the school board on which the nominee is a member. The application packet of Board President, or Board Vice President Timothy Doran is before the board for consideration. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the endorsement of Timothy P. Doran as a nominee to the Association of Alaska School Boards, AASB Board of Directors.
Second.
So, any board discussion? Mr. Burgess.
I want to speak in support of, of this. I think Tim's service on, or Mr. Doran's service on AASB so far has been wonderful and has brought, brought a lot of benefit to, to our community as well, giving us a voice. So, I'll keep it short, but, but yeah, I fully support this.
Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Colonel Foster.
Yes.
Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Early.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Burgess.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Marotti.
Yes.
Buried. The next item on our agenda is the Superintendent Employment Agreement Approval. The school board will form a contract committee consisting of three board members. The committee will collaborate with Dr. Minarch and the district's attorney to reach an agreement on the contractual terms for the 2026, 2027 school year in preparation for the September 17th regular board meeting. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the initiation of contract negotiations with Dr. Luke Minarch for the position of Superintendent of the Fairbanks North Starborough School District with the intention of extending his contract by one year effective July 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2027. Second.
I just realized, I have twice now skipped public comments. I am sorry if anybody had wished a comment on those two approvals. I, I don't think there was, but I'm not seeing anyone jumping up because we can go back. So, now, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to provide public comments on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Ms. Marotti.
Just a question of clarification. The motion is to extend the contract for one year, but under public comment, the, the information says that we're forming a committee. Is it one or the other?
And I might throw to Dr. Minarch because I know we looked up how to do that.
Yeah, so guidance from outside counsel was to take action to extend the contract for a year and then as well as form a committee to work through the negotiating phase. And so it, once that's over, it would come back to the school board again for a final
Mr. Doran.
Yes, and I believe, we actually voted to extend the contract last June, but it was pending the negotiations piece. So, this is actually to get that negotiations piece in place so that we can bring back for the actual contract approval. The extension was there, but the actual contract approval will be with, with, what the details are.
Dr. Minarch.
So, the, the board had mentioned verbally that they were supportive of a, an additional year of a contract, but it wasn't a, an agenda item. And so to make it clean for the board, we thought it was best to have a specific agenda
Is there any questions or other discussion on this? Not seeing any. Ms. Richardson, could you call, or was that one, Mr. Doran? Ms. Richardson? Oh, I thought we made it. Now we're out of here. I swear we did it before we did public comment.
Oh, sorry.
It's a beginning of a new year. We're, we're a little rusty. Okay. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Charlie.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Marotti.
Yes.
Dr. Doran.
Yes.
Yes.
Maple.
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ardi.
Yes.
Buried.
There are board members that are wanting to be on that contract committee that we have just formed, please email me or let me know. I know some of you already have, but that way everybody knows so I can know who is and is not interested. The next item on our agenda is AR 913 Board Committee and Committee Applications. AR 9130 Board Committee and Committee Applications is proposed to be revised and is before the board for a report by the administration. May I have a motion?
Move to approve adoption of AR 9130 Board Committee and Committee Applications. I believe I was going to air to, do I need to project this onto the screen, the side-by-side? Was that going to be projected?
Could, so I'm hearing that we would like a quick recess and before we do that, just to be sure, is there anyone in the room that would like to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, the public comment is now closed and we will take a five-minute recess. We are now back from our recess. The time is 7:20. And we will throw it to Ms. Dillard.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with Administrative Regulation 9130, but I just wanted to introduce really the next three agenda items as administrative regulations that are attached to your board bylaws in Article 9. They have to be approved by the board now with the added language in Policy 9313. And so, there were other administrative regulations that were attached to the new policies that were implemented in the spring, but they were unchanged. The numbering changed, but nothing else changed in the language. So these three ARs need to be addressed by the board because there's changes. So starting with Administrative Regulation 9130, this is from originally to R 236.1, so out of Chapter 2. I'm just going to summarize some of the changes that were made in this administrative regulation, which were done in the Spring at Work Session with the board. We changed parent engagement to family engagement. We rescinded the Audit Committee from this document. We added a revised quorum requirement, so all of the language in this administrative regulation in regards to quorum is new. The Legislative Committee will be a committee of the whole. Parent and community applicants are chosen by order of applications when they are received instead of by board chair decision, so that was a change. Parent guardians can fill vacant community member slots. And district employees can serve as parent and community members. That's a change. Membership for each committee was revised with the goal overall of reducing the numbers in each committee. I don't want to go through all of those numbers, but if you have questions, I can let you know what changed on any of the committees. We added additional direction on how board committee recommendations are reported, and then we added a section on board committee standards. So that's pretty much what we changed. As far as the side-by-side, we created this because we did send this edited administrative regulation out to the board ahead of time to look at and provide any feedback. And so, if you look at this document, on the left-hand side is the same first reading document, and on the right, we have some edits. So Mr. Burgess provided some changes to this section here under membership of board committees. For the most part, it was just a formatting change, but on the left-hand side, you'll see that Legislative Committee and Budget Committee specifics were taken out because it is already stated below under the committees themselves. And... All the way at the bottom, we have under Board Committee Member Terms for Committee Chair Appointed Annually One-Year Term by the Board President for a Two-Year Limit with the addition of unless waived by the president under extenuating circumstances. And then lastly, I know you don't have this to look at, so sorry. We can go back through whatever you need. And then, under this section, "A committee member who wishes to continue to serve after a term limit on a board committee must allow one year to pass prior to reapplication or request for assignment to the same or another committee." That is our current language, and it looks like by striking the recommendation to strike or another committee, I would assume that means we want applicants to be able to transition to a different meeting without that delay.
Mr. Burgess, did you want to speak?
I have a procedural question, because we had, I was unsure if we need to make these motions following the...
Yep. So what I would like to see us do, since this is just first reading, and this is kind of like a group Google Doc edit, if there are things that we mostly agree on and no one has objections, then there's probably not a reason to have a roll-call vote. We can propose these changes. We're going to vote on the document as a whole, and then it's still going to come before the board. This is AR, so it wouldn't, right? We're not doing first reading. This would pass it, an AR. Versus a policy change that has multiple readings. And we can always, if somebody wants to, I was catching myself in the act. But if there is something that people feel strongly about in those edits that are being proposed, or you have additional edits, then we can make formal changes and have a roll-call vote. But it doesn't seem necessary unless there's a reason to go through that formality. Is there anyone who disagrees? I know Ms. Burnett, you had a change to the one that I proposed, just striking the extenuating circumstances. And I totally agree with that. That's fine. My premise in proposing that is actually thinking of like Mr. Doran, who served on the Budget Committee multiple years, and if there's changeover or there isn't, depending on how mover or how people switch around, we might want that depth of knowledge to remain there past a two-year commitment to make sure that certain committees have that, although it's best practice to give board members the ability to try and serve in different committees. But it just gives us some flexibility without having to come back and change the AR through a formal process. Ms. Marotti?
If we didn't email our amendments ahead of time, I didn't know that if, why that was happening, so I didn't, because it's not our normal process. So if we have amendments, doing is a normal...
Yep, they're welcome now, too. It was just to give everybody processing time to read each other's. We didn't dialogue, but it was so we kind of could understand what people were thinking to make sure, since we're going through so much.
Yep.
You have any for this one, Ms. Marotti?
Oh, yeah, it's at the very end, though. Do you want me to add to it? Sorry, it's Board Committee Standards. I guess, first, I have a question. The part where it says, at the very, very end, "Members or attendees may be removed from the committee upon the recommendation of the committee chair confirmed by the board president and/or superintendent." What does confirmed by mean?
My understanding, and you might correct from, because I think it came from our conversations, that it was just so that there was a conversation before that action happened between this, either the superintendent or the president, so that there's making sure everybody is understanding what's happening, and whoever the committee chair would have support in making that change.
When I hear confirmed by, I don't think of it just a conversation. Is there another word that more aligns with that definition? Am I the only one that thinks that? If I'm the only one that thinks that, then I'll stop. Dr. Minor, oh, sorry, Brittany.
There's a party. Dr. Minor and then Ms. Maple.
I don't know if confirmed is the exact language that we want, but I do think it's appropriate that the superintendent or president is involved, especially when we're dismissing a member from a committee, because I often think that we would probably seek legal guidance on the dismissal, and so that's why you would want your superintendent or board president involved in that conversation or situation.
Ms. Maple?
Is agreement a more, I know the word can't just be replaced with agreement, the sentence wouldn't make sense, but is that more what we're getting at, that the superintendent or the board chair has been conferred with, and they're in agreement that this is the appropriate path forward?
Do, in agreement or in consultation? Yes.
I was going to say in consultation with.
Ms. Marotti?
I lean more towards in consultation with, because I think it's a committee chair decision that we are letting the superintendent and board president know of, not needing agreement from them to go forward.
We're going to go Mr. Burgess, then Mr. Doran.
Yeah, I would agree that in consultation with should be the language that we use for the same reasons that Ms. Marotti stated.
Mr. Doran?
I didn't have an issue with in consultation as the phrase, but I think it's really important that it not just be the chair, both for the protection of the chair and the committee member. I think it's, it needs to be more than just one person deciding that this other person's being disruptive. If I'm the chair, it could be that I am not handling it correctly, or I'm taking personal exception, as much as I might try to be objective. So I think it needs to be more than just the chair saying it. If in consultation with is, you know, you're coming to basically an understanding, mutual understanding, that yes, this is, and it cannot be retrieved, because it may be a matter of saying, well, maybe if somebody else talks to this person, we could avoid the abrasiveness or whatever the concern might be. So with the commentary, I would be more in favor of an agreement or an understanding. But I wasn't concerned about in consultation with the understanding that that's, you know, it's three people, two or three, two or three, at least two people, maybe three people involved with this. But I think that's a, it's a very important thing that it be more than one person making that decision.
Arnold Cole?
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Doran. But since we're quibbling over words, sort of, now I go to recommendation. So the words, "upon the recommendation of the committee chair," implies that they do not have the authority to remove them, right? So if we're going to go to a three-party decision, and it's not a recommendation from the committee chair to someone else, that implies they don't have that authority. But I'm hearing the committee chair should have some authority to remove, it could even a member for disruptive behavior. So I think we got to take a look at the whole sentence now, right? So not just in consultation.
Ms. Burnett?
I'd actually agree with that, and an easy solution would be maybe the word approval in replace of recommendation. So upon the approval of the, or upon the approval of the committee chair in consultation with the board president and/or superintendent.
Mr. Doran?
Maybe that's the wrong word.
If I can build on that concept a little bit, I think the chair is making the recommendation, and then the recommendation is for approval by the board president and/or, and I would say and superintendent. I think that way it gives multiple perspective.
Mr. Doran, Ms. Marotti asked if you could repeat that.
So I would leave recommendation where it is. The committee chair is making this recommendation, and it's for approval with the board president and superintendent.
Do you want me to say that out loud? You want me to repeat it in sentence?
If you would, and then Ms. Marotti.
Right. "A committee member who demonstrates a pattern of disrespectful behavior towards other committee members or attendees may be removed from the committee upon the recommendation of the committee chair with approval from the board president and/or superintendent."
Ms. Marotti?
I will be completely honest, this has happened in the past, and the board president did not, even though the committee member was harmful, disrespectful, and not there for the benefit of the committee, the board president upheld their appointment. And so, I'm not that experiencing that live and in person is what makes me want to not leave this decision wholly up to the board president, because sometimes the board president is not acting in the best interest of that committee.
We're going to go Ms. Sanderson, and then Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Doran.
Well, another member of the board is the clerk, and the clerk has specific duties, so that could be the other member that would be, could be consulted or be a part of this decision.
Ms. Burnett?
I think that problem is easily solved just removing or with and superintendent. It's not just the board president. The superintendent has to be involved. That way, if maybe we do have a board president who is not serving the interests of the committee or the board, then the superintendent would hopefully in that case back up the committee chair, and then therefore, the president would be overruled.
Mr. Doran, then we're going to go Ms. Maple, Mr. Burgess.
I'm going to suggest that it be the recommendation... I'm gonna suggest that it be the recommendation from the committee, of the committee, rather than the chair. That means that the disruption is not something that the chair recognizes, but the committee recognizes and finds objectionable or nonproductive. And it means the chair, as chair, can make that case to the committee and say, this is what I'm seeing. And the committee, and so there's a body of people, it takes it away from one person being in the spotlight. And that, so would be the recommendation of the committee for action by the board president and superintendent.
Ms. Maple?
I was just gonna say, I would be wary of putting the superintendent in a position where they, where he or whoever in the future it may be, has to be sort of a tiebreaker, because technically, the superintendent reports to the board, and that could put the superintendent in a unfair position to have to, to mediate amongst the board members. That having somebody, that having it, I mean, I like what Ms. Sanderson said, that perhaps there's an alternative member of the board that would, if, if we came to a situation where it was essentially a mediator was needed, a tiebreaker, or whatever, that that falls within the board, and that we don't accidentally put a superintendent in a precarious position.
Mr. Burgess?
I would agree with what Ms. Maple just said. So maybe we could change superintendent to clerk, as Ms. Sanderson had suggested. I also wonder if, if it would be more appropriate to keep "or" and remove "and," if we're, if we're trying to prevent a single person from, you know, being able to make the decision or not make the decision, I think we would, we would want, we would either want to keep "or," or put in something about, you know, how to actually break that tie.
Ms. Charlie, Ms. Burnett, and then Dr. Minor.
Thinking about including the whole body, I don't think I agree with that, because looking at the makeup of the different committees, they may have support on that committee, and we're asking committee members to kind of vote against each other, and it'd cause more division than there could possibly already be.
Ms. Burnett?
So, I think we're arguing semantics here, and getting really complicated and bogged down in wording. I do appreciate not wanting to bog the superintendent down as well. That was something I didn't even think about, and that is completely accurate. What if it, instead of the clerk, all of us are equal board members, we're all a part of this, the board, this can be an approval of the board. So it can just come to the board, we've got a committee member that needs removed of this committee, the board votes on it, the board agrees. That seems like it would be a good solution. That way, everybody's involved, we're not giving it to just the president, we're not leaving it to the superintendent, and we're all making a choice on a possible problem member.
Dr. Minor, and then we're going to go Mr. Burgess, Mr. Doran, and Ms. Maple, was that a hand? And Ms. Maple?
I do like Ms. Maple's suggestion and Mr. Burgess's, that maybe it's a "or superintendent" rather than a "and." And I think it's just really important that the board president or the superintendent is involved, because those are the two entities that work closely with legal. And there is a legal threshold for removing a member that has to be met. And so that's, you know, where the board president or the superintendent would go immediately is to legal, to see whether or not it met that definition of removal for that individual. So keeping that in mind, that legal needs to be closely involved in this process.
Mr. Burgess?
I appreciate that, that clarification from Dr. Minor. And I agree with Ms. Charlie as well, that I don't think it would be appropriate for the committee to, to vote on the removal of one of its members. It might be the way that elected bodies often make decisions when there's ethics issues or questions like this of actually doing your duty. But these are volunteers, not, not elected officials. So I don't think that it's appropriate to put that kind of weight on them and, and risk divisiveness within a committee that would, could potentially make the issue worse.
Mr. Doran?
I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity to think through different things. And I would agree that, though I suggested a committee recommendation, that it's not the full committee. For the same reason, I would not bring it back to the board for action, because that puts it way out into the public, could be embarrassing for an individual, or become a bigger issue. We don't, and to Mr. Burgess's point, these are volunteers, we don't approve they're going on the committee. Why, so I would say that, yes, and I would trust the president, whether it's "and/or superintendent." But I think that consultation, that, that confirmation needs to be there, so if there are other issues that could be done, or at least the chair has support. But I would not bring it back to the board for action, because the, the spotlighting that could then happen, and be embarrassing for an individual, or being contentious on a larger platform.
Ms. Maple?
Okay, so if it's "and/or," then we don't need both. I theoretically could go to the board president, and the board president could say, I don't think that's a good, that's the right path forward. And I could say, okay, Dr. Minor, can you consult legal and tell me if it's the right path forward? And then nobody has to, I am making the decision still, and I need approval from one of you with, and one, and that is assuming that legal would be consulted by either the board president or the, I mean, I think that eliminates those. It doesn't put the superintendent in a precarious position. It does, nobody has to mediate, it doesn't have to become public, nobody gets, well, theoretically, nobody gets embarrassed. And is that, does that solve it, "and/or" with consultation?
Ms. Marotti?
Through the chair, I would respond to Ms. Maple as yes. First, I want to preface with, I appreciate this discussion, I brought it up, and I don't find it quibbling, or arguing about semantics. This has been a huge issue for years, and I'm grateful that we're finally having this discussion. It's, it's very, very important. What I've heard Dr. Minor say a few times now, is that legal needs to be involved. And so I think in this policy, we need to clarify that. I like what Ms. Maple suggested, in removing the "and," and it being an "or" situation, and adding, or maybe before it, somehow, of the committee chair in consultation with legal, or our attorney, I don't know how to word that, and, and then somehow incorporate the board president or superintendent. Sorry, Diana, I did not give you enough words, but I hope, hope that helped. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you add on just a little bit? Sorry, and the, to add legal, I'm hoping will, prevent board members from willy-nilly bringing this up, and really make them be thoughtful about their action of removing a member, because it will cost the district money to bring in the attorney.
Mr. Doran, then Mr. Burgess?
I want to affirm that, yes, though we're spending some time on this issue, it has been an issue in the past. It is the exception. But it has been, so letting everyone be on the same footing, I think is important. I don't have any issue with consulting legal, but I think I would put it as appropriately, as appropriate. Because a lot of times, I can see happening, that an individual may not be contributing constructively, and sometimes just with a conversation, that can be taken care of. Or it can be that, yeah, I'm having a hard time with this, I'll step away, and the person may do that. And so we don't necessarily have to go to the legal. But I think it is good to have that there, so that if there is a broader issue, that maybe lend itself to some legal consultation. I think it's, the reference is good. But I would leave it open, because a lot of times, people do respond and say, yes, okay, I'll, I'll step away.
Mr. Burgess?
Mr. Doran actually said much of what I was going to say, but I do want to say that the, getting wording right in policy and AR, I think, is very important, because an "and" or an "or" can change the legal meaning of a sentence. As someone who works in, you know, with, with environmental regulations, the meanings of specific words in these kinds of, of documents can be extremely important in their interpretation and implementation. So I really appreciate that we are all willing to have these discussions, even if it is a little tedious. So, thank you.
Can I try, can I try to see if it sounds okay?
Yes, please.
All right. So, a committee member who demonstrates a pattern of disrespectful behavior towards other committee members or attendees will be removed from the committee upon the recommendation of the committee chair. The board president or superintendent will approve or deny the recommendation after consulting with legal as appropriate.
Are there any objections? I'm thinking that seems to have covered the issue. I wanted to go back, was there a hand before I'm missing? Back up in the document, and just make sure that we captured, Ms. Burnett had sent in with that same thing, that we were gonna take out. Okay, I wasn't sure if we did that. And then Colonel Cole, to put you on the spot, we had discussed something earlier about concerns about committees, and this would be the time to bring that up. If you're Colonel Cole, if you, this is the document where we're talking about committees and makeup, and you had brought that up with me, so if we wanted to share it with the board.
Yes, I thought somebody else was gonna go first, and then you were gonna come to Colonel Cole. So a, I don't know how we word it, but we have some parent guardian, parent guardian representatives, we have tribal consultation representative, got at-large community representative, we have a large military-connected students, military families, you know, inside our school board, or in our school district as well. And I'm wondering if we can get a military-connected representative, not to all the committees, but maybe to the family engagement committee. Because those family members receive information a little bit differently, and they engage with their past experiences from their seven or eight different school systems that they've been in. So that was a question that I had. Now, I can always go back and advertise that they are looking for, you know, at-large or parent guardian representative, and they can join the committee that way. But I think it'd be good, you know, I can work with my Ileson counterpart, we could say, hey, do you have anybody from Ileson that wants to do it this year? Yep, hey, cool, let your person be the one representative or not. So it was a question that I had for the board for consideration. I didn't know if it was a good idea or not.
Ms. Burnett, then Ms. Marotti?
Colonel Cole, thank you for that. As the committee chair for the family engagement committee, I actually would support looking into this, and seeing what we could do to make this happen. Out of the few meetings that we did have last year, there was a lot of concern that actually did come forward from military families, that there's a lack of communication, there is a lack of feeling connected to our schools, and to what is going on inside of our schools. And I would love to be able to reach over those lines, and be able to connect with those families, and get them involved, and see what we can do to cross those bridges and help our military students out. So I would be in support and in favor of this.
Ms. Marotti?
I just want to also thank the Colonel for bringing this to our attention. I wholeheartedly support it, not just for the family engagement committee, but for all of the committees. This is that, the military representation is what the board models, and I think that that needs to be represented on the committees as well. However, I do not want to add more members to our committees. We've been told we have too many, and we need to reduce. So I would support reducing a number in one area, in order to add a military representative in another area. But I do believe it needs to be on all of our committees, for the same reason we have them on our board.
Mr. Doran?
I'm in support of the suggestion. I'm particularly, I was looking at maybe a couple of the committees being more appropriate, but I would, thinking about it, I would go for one on each of the committees. I know there's a concern for committee size, for sure. It was a suggestion, we determine what we want, and we've, we have cut some to the size. This would eat into that, although I look at the diversity committee, and I say there's five, five community members, maybe if we go four, and then one is the military there, that would keep that committee to their same number. But I think it is something that, I know on the Budget Committee, talking just from that point of view, having the military there perspective would be a very important one. And our budget does tap into the federal budget a lot. So, you know, just from that perspective, I think it'd be worth it. And I'm assuming that those would be appointed by the military advisory reps, and that could be, at least I would suggest maybe that way, that they can work together, so.
Colonel Cole, and then Colonel Foster, or was that just agreement? Work, okay. I wasn't sure if that was, we'd like to speak.
So it's not like one and one, we can...
Mr. Burgess?
I'm gonna speak in support of this idea as well, and I would agree with Ms. Marotti that where possible, which I think we can on most of our committees, that we should reduce one of the other positions. I'm looking through, and I was gonna suggest at-large, reduce at-large and replace one of those with military, which would work for most of our committees, but not all of them. Because then we would not, you know, one of, for example, curriculum committee currently has one spot for an at-large community member, and we want to keep that, so we don't want to reduce that one.
I'm gonna put myself in the queue just real quick for a question, given it's DOD, and we're kind of asking, you represent, would it be appropriate to have that on a legislative committee? Or is that, I know sometimes influencing, those sort of things can get tricky from what the DOD isn't, and isn't allowed to have a perspective on.
Yeah, technically, we would not, like an appointed DOD representative, probably shouldn't be on the legislative committee. But this is where sometimes the parent guardian, it might be a dual hat. So a parent guardian, if we can, you know, advertise out there to our military-connected parents and guardians, that you're looking for a legislative committee. that you're looking for a legislative committee, you know, parent guardian member, then they can come with that DOD perspective, right? But we definitely wouldn't want to appoint someone in our formations to attend because then it does look like a federal entity influencing local legislation. Yeah.
Not seen any further discussion, but I don't, looks like maybe Mr. Doran. Mr. Doran.
Okay. So, maybe a suggestion with that going down the committees. Budget, I think I would just add it in. So, that would move the budget committee to one more member. Curriculum, perhaps instead of four parent guardians, have three with one military and then a military. On the diversity, I would suggest the at-large being reduced to four and add the military. Skipping legislative, family engagement, perhaps go from five parent guardian and add one to four and then add the military. And in policy, I would look at probably just adding.
Ms. Marotti.
I support Mr. Doran's suggestion, except for the budget committee. I think that because you have three parent guardians, you can reduce that to two and have one of them and then add the one military rep there. It's already, it's a 16 to 17 member committee, whereas the policy committee is 15. So, adding another member to the budget committee is a lot. It's one more to a big committee already.
Mr. Doran.
Possibly on policy, go to the at-large, make that one. And that would keep it the same size by adding. And military is an at-large community member, so.
Mr. Doran.
And I would say with budget committee, to a certain extent, where I'm really comfortable seeing is having a fairly large committee there is that, that is one where the, our community is so vested in it, having the broad perspective and understanding of the budget is beneficial, I think, to our overall conversation, so.
So, I think we're still looking for a consensus. It sounds like Mr. Doran would prefer to have the budget committee get one larger. Ms. Marotti was saying, let's trim from one of our community at-large members. Is there any other opinions? Do we need to do a roll call vote on that item? Ms. Burnett, and then Mr. Doran.
I would agree, taking it down one at-large and replacing with the military to keep it the same size. That is a very large committee.
Ms. Marotti, clarification?
Yeah, my, my suggestion was not from the at-large, because there's only two in that category, but there's three in parent guardians. So, my suggestion was to reduce parent guardian from three to two and adding the military liaison with that one.
Mr. Doran.
And that was part of a clarification, I thought. Ms. Marotti's suggestion was the parents. I think on the budget, it is really important having the broader at-large members because they, they pay for our budget and we need everybody in our community to be represented. So, I'd rather it come out of, if it was to reduce, I'd rather see it come out of parent guardians rather than at-large.
So, I think I'm seeing consensus then to reduce it from parent guardian to keep the committee size the same. Were there any further edits to this? Mr. Doran.
Two things, and I'm assuming you're talking about edits in general to this AR.
Yes, I think we.
So, I do there. I would suggest that if a committee is full, these positions, that we may do a transition. You know, if this passes, that we let people finish. And we might temporarily have somebody more. Thinking particularly of the budget, people who have already put it on their calendar, let them finish and we'll deal with the extra person for, for that period. But then go from there. So, with 9130, on, I'm sorry. That's the one we're on.
Fill in committee stats, that one.
Can I ask just a clarifying question on the military piece so that I get that right before we move on to something different? Thank you so much. So, what I'm hearing, and this was a question that I had, Mr. Doran, what I'm hearing is that we would transition these new numbers after the adoption of this AR. And we would just allow for extra members beyond if we've already, because a lot of boards have filled their membership. So, we'll just allow to have extra people. Will they be voting members?
I would say yes, because the only non-voting are the board and administration members. But that would be my, my feeling. And especially because we have just filled some positions and to say, oh, you're on, but now you're off. We have, draw a store and somebody needs to leave would be, I don't think would be appropriate. But that's what I would see is transition, or they're all voting, except for the two.
And would we, are we calling them military connected parents guardians? Or, I mean, are we wanting them to be parents or guardians or just military connected member? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. I, I support and appreciate Mr. Doran's suggestion of current committee members finishing out their terms. I ran into a little panic because our first diversity committee meeting is tomorrow night. And we were talking about what we were going to do. And so, that would help, definitely help transition the committees. Which leads me to a request through the chair to our superintendent, if that's okay, to whatever happens tonight in regards to the committee, to let the board members know what communications is going out to our committee admins and how we can word this united, in a united way, in a uniform way, I guess, so that we're all on the same page, saying the same thing to our committee members and how we're going to roll this out in transition.
Dr. Minier, did you?
Yes. Well, definitely share that with the board and make sure that the board's receiving the same communications that's going out to all of our administrative staff.
Mr. Burgess.
I just wanted to speak in support of, of keeping things as they are until the current committee members finish out their terms. I think that would help our, our issues on curriculum committee as well, because we've just accepted new members.
Are we okay to move on if members had other edits?
One last thing, just to add. The military connected member will be assigned by the board military advisory member. So, I added that piece. Yes, I'm done with that.
Colonel Cole?
Yes, they'll be voluntary, but they will be appointed. So, they'll be one of our representatives. But they'll represent the entire military community.
So, maybe instead of assigned, change to appointed?
We have assigned in the other ones.
Sure.
Yeah, assigned is fine. Yes, sorry. I wanted it to match the similar language as everybody else. Voluntary board members are assigned as follows, yeah.
Were there any other edits to this AR by board members? Mr. Doran.
On this one, I do have other edits. Should we say annually? As we have with the others.
Absolutely.
And they could easily be done for two years if you wanted, et cetera, like the others. Are we ready for other edits?
Mr. Doran.
Okay. On page two, budget committee, first bullet, I would suggest that we strike in training after the member, other member. They're not necessarily in training. There are another board member on there.
I'm not seeing any objection.
And then, I had a question on the diversity committee, why we had five community, at-large community versus three parents, but we've already reduced that three and four. So, that's less of an issue with me. Then on the legislative, on page three, I have several questions there. I'm suggesting that district lobbyist, maybe instead of when available, when filled, would be the appropriate because they should be a part of, if, if we have a lobbyist, they should be a part of this committee. And it's not just on availability, but it's more whether we happen to have one or not.
Ms. Marotti.
I, I hear what Mr. Doran's saying. I wonder though, even when that position wasn't filled, we had, we invited AASB's lobbyists to, to fill that position, like last year. So, by fill, do you mean like in contract with us? Or could that be even if it's AASB's lobbyist or another lobbyist that we are borrowing?
My answer, okay. I think in terms of the district lobbyists specifically, if we have one contracted, and I make that distinction because they have an obligation to us. The AASB lobbyists may, you know, we can invite other people to the committee. Any committee could have someone come and provide input. But they don't have a responsibility to us as a district. So, they may be able to provide information that would be helpful to the committee, but they would not be a voting member of the committee. And there may be, we might have an interest, for instance, in asking the borough lobbyist to come and share some thoughts. So, there, there can be others that we would do. But, but I think if we have a district lobbyist for us, representing us and accountable to us, then the legislative committee is an appropriate place for them to be. And so, that, that's my thinking.
I'm going to put myself in the queue on that. I'm wondering if the lobbyist should be mentioned as a member at all, since they would be somebody advising us, not voting. And currently, we have all members voting. So, perhaps they would be an addendum or somewhere on top that a lobbyist, district or otherwise, should be invited or consulted, you know, to attend the meeting, but that they wouldn't necessarily vote. Ms. Marotti, then Mr. Doran.
I am trying to recall if our prior contracted paid lobbyist voted. I just assumed reading this that they did and we were keeping that practice. But if they are not a voting member, then I agree. They need to be moved out of that list if we say all voting members.
Mr. Doran.
Okay. Interestingly, we don't have a admin staff member as such, unless that position is specifically taken by the superintendent, which is fine. I, the concern for the district lobbyists who we're paying, but any staff member, we're doing that too. I think, you know, there's enough people on this committee. Plus, it comes back to the board. The board makes the decision, final decision. So, I think they should have a vote on it. I, I think they should be fully participant. That's, in a sense, why we hire them. So, so I would make the argument that they should be a voting member. There's plenty of people on this and it's only a recommendation that a committee makes.
Not seeing further discussion. I'm not really sure where the rest of the board lands on the idea of the lobbyist. Mr. Burgess.
I appreciate the discussion. I, I'm a little hesitant to, to say that the lobbyist should be a voting member because the, the relationship with the board or the district is, is an employment relationship. I guess that that doesn't, I'm going to talk myself out of it here. It's, I'm, I'm a little on the fence, I guess. So, that's, that's what I wasn't speaking at before. But, because I could see the benefit of, of having the lobbyist have full participation. I also think that it might put them in a slightly awkward position as an employee of the district or a contract, not an employee, but a contracted worker. And so, I, I think I'm leaning towards having the lobbyist there, if we have one, but not necessarily making them a voting member. And I do agree that it would be beneficial to pull in AASB's lobbyist or the boroughs as well, whenever possible, just for informational purposes. I don't know that that needs to go in the AR, though.
Given that we currently did not budget for a lobbyist and do not employ one, and we can adapt this AR again if we were to employ one, I would be inclined to just have somewhere where we may be put that a lobbyist should be invited to the legislative committee meeting when available. And then, once we have the funds to employ a lobbyist again, we could update the AR to reflect that. Mr. Doran.
So, I would suggest just deleting district lobbyists. And if that comes up at some time, then we can make a quick adjustment at that time rather than clouding the AR at this point with possibilities.
I think we're in agreement that. I don't know if we need to mention in the AR that we're inviting a lobbyist or if that's just something we'll do in practice.
I would say that you would only need to put it in if you wanted to clarify whether or not they were a voting member, if that was going to be a question, so.
And I know we invited AASB's last year, and I don't believe that they voted. They just participated in the meeting for us. All right. Were there any further edits to the document? Looks like Mr. Doran.
This is my last edit, because the, the other one was taken care of. I had a question about committee of the whole and on the legis, that this legislative committee of the whole. I'm trying to understand what the, the impact, positive impact of that since the recommendation comes back to the full board to decide. So, we act on it as the whole board. So, it's, it's a question I have. If I can get some clarification on why it would be a committee of the whole versus a smaller committee as we've had in the past.
Ms. Burnett.
Thank you, President Hardy. Through the chair, Mr. Doran.
Through the chair, Mr. Doran, so I was one of the ones that actually was pushing to make this a Committee of the Whole. And the reasoning for that is, we all have a different idea on how we can go about legislatively getting through to our legislators, and trying to advocate for funding, trying to advocate for things that we need here in our district. And yes, it comes back to the board for approval, but allowing the board to also have the whole entire discussion in a work session-like environment as a committee, also gives us the freedom to be outside of this kind of setting, and have those discussions more freely, and then we come back to the board as the board, and then we dissect those decisions, and we come up with a good, solid plan for our legislative priorities. And so that would be the purpose of a Committee of the Whole, is that we go, we, we are able to more freely have those discussions, and then we come back and solidify our legislative priorities.
Mr. Burgess.
I agree with Ms. Burnett. I, I think that have, being able to have the, the discussion in a more open committee environment is, is of benefit to us all. And, lost my second point there, but yeah, I, I support, I would support this, remaining as Committee of the Whole.
Ms. Marotti.
I too support the Legislative Committee becoming a Committee of the Whole. I think that the more diverse perspectives on that committee, the better, so the more board members that have been elected to, to advocate for our district and our students, the better. More the merrier.
Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, I was never in favor of the Committee of the Whole. The committee is already doing the work, they make the recommendation to the board, the board discusses, votes on it, and then it's our, it, it belongs to us, so I don't, I don't see the need for that.
I'll add myself to the queue. I was also in favor of it being a Committee of the Whole. I know, prior to sitting in the President's Chair, I really would have liked to be on that committee, but it only had three members, and I wasn't appointed, and it felt like I wasn't able to have as big of a participation in creating those legislative priorities as I would have liked. This allows all the board members to have an equal chance to create those legislative priorities, and as we've seen tonight, it's a whole lot easier to do these kinds of changes and talk about what you're really feeling, not from a dais, but around a table where we can have discussions, and it's a more natural editing and give and flow process, where I could see, if we keep it with only three board members, it will come back to having to have a lot of robust discussions in full view of the public. I mean, it's always in full view of the public, but in a less collaborative manner. It is hard to feel collaborative, sitting in a line at a dais. Mr. Burgess.
I think the other, the other benefit to having all of us there in the committee is that we all get to hear from the committee members themselves. And, and so, that, I believe, is something that would, would help us as, as a board to understand the perspectives when we do bring it back for the final board approval. I also had a question, if the intent is to include advisory members in the Committee of the Whole? Just to elaborate on that, I see that we have a tribal consultation member on the Legislative Committee, and the student board member is on the committee, but I do not see the military representatives listed specifically.
So, kind of, I'll go to that, since I did ask the, the colonels, and they can reiterate if they feel like, it would be putting them in a very tough spot as a DOD employee to... Yep. Ms. Marotti.
But, could, could, so, for example, it says tribal consultation member, could Ms. Charlie then appoint herself, if she wanted to, if that was what she found appropriate for the Legislative Committee, instead of appointing another person? Like, it's up to the rep?
I think up to the rep, or I read it as Ms. Charlie, or whoever was holding that, that position.
Gotcha. Thanks for the clarification.
Ms. Charlie.
I was just going to say, I am on the Budget Committee, and also we have FNA members, staff on all of the committees.
Are we feeling ready for a vote? Mr. Doran.
So, what's the decision, it stays as Committee of the Whole, or?
I was seeing a consensus, but we can hold a vote, that most board members were in favor of Committee of the Whole, but if we would like to hold a roll call vote, we can do that.
I just wanted to know what the majority was, so. So, knowing that, my, my reservation's about the Whole stay, and we'd be seven of the nine, and there'd be nine other members, so, significant. The, other than peace, if it stays as Committee of the Whole, I was looking at that under parliamentary procedure, and thinking in terms of how the Assembly operates when they do Committee of the Whole, and they do follow, they don't use Roberts' rules, but similar one, where the Chair is not the presiding officer of the, of the body. And so, I would suggest that, if we're going to, with the idea of doing Committee of the Whole, that we follow that procedure, and that somebody else be Chair.
The Legislative Committee is the only committee of which the Board President is a Chair. Mr. Doran.
Yes, I am well aware of that. And, when it was not a Committee of the Whole, I think that was very, but using the specific terminology of Committee of the Whole, I, I would think that it is good to have someone else's Chair, because also then, when that committee reports to the board for board action, then that is the Chair of that committee that's bringing that forward. And having watched that at the Assembly level, how they've done that with their committees of the Whole, particularly the Financial Committee, having someone else Chair it, and then make that report to the body at large, and then when I read Roberts' Rules of Orders regarding that, it's consistent in process, so, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Burgess.
I'm going to support Mr. Doran on this. I, I do think that if it, if it's more consistent with process, it's, I mean, these, these sound like good reasons to me to, to have, you know, maybe the Vice President or another member Chair this committee. I'm not, I'm not too concerned about it either way, but it does sound like, from a process perspective, it would be a little cleaner.
Are there any board discussion either way, or we can hold a vote, because I need consensus? Okay. It seems like we would like to have a roll call vote on whether or not the Board President remains the Chair of the Legislative Committee. Do we need to make a motion? I'm assuming. Somebody, someone have a motion? Maybe move to amend? Ms. Burnett say vote? Okay. If we're not needing a vote, that's fine, too. We just need a consensus. Okay.
Can we call for a vote?
Can we, can I suggest we take an at ease, and while we figure out what motion to make?
Sure. Let's take a brief at ease. And we are back. That was just a brief at ease, and now, may I have a motion, it sounds like?
I move to amend to replace School Board President with Clerk on that first line.
Second. Is there any board discussion on this motion? I'm not seeing any, so, Ms. Richardson, would you please call a vote?
Colonel Foster.
Yes.
Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Harley.
No.
Bannon.
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Oh, no.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Hardy?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay. Mr. Doran.
Just an edit, in light of that motion, that on page one, the, under membership of Board Committee, it's the third bullet, just be edited to say Board Clerk.
Where?
With the, sorry, with the edits that, that I received and provided on this document, that section is actually gone in the first page. Just the sentence about Legislative Committee and Budget Committee were taken out.
Okay.
Sorry, at this time, you would only see it on what's on the screen.
Okay. That's fine, then, I just wanted to make sure we had it consistent.
Are we ready for a vote? On the Committee AR as a whole? All right. A yes vote will approve this AR, and it will go on to AASB, and a no vote will send it back down to us for more edits. Ms. Richardson, would you please call a vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Charlie?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Carried.
The next item on our agenda is AR 9270, Conflict of Interest. The conflict of interest is proposed, proposed to be revised, and is before the board for a report by Administration.
Thank you. This administrative regulation is attached to Policy 9270, Conflict of Interest. At your work session, you chose to, so this is the AASB model policy language for this policy. At work session, you chose to use your own policy language from 240, and then took the AASB policy language and created this AR to capture that. So that's where this AR came from, and I did have one lengthy edit that I received today, so I also have this one on the board to look at, and it was just this one change.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve adoption of AR 9311, Board Policies.
Second.
Are there board discussion on this item?
Point of order.
I'm, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. Could I?
Sorry, yep. Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Move to approve adoption of AR 9270, Conflict of Interest.
Second. Okay. Now, is there any board discussion on this item? Mr. Doran.
I like the, the addition, basically, that's there, and I think that's been our more common practice, that the President makes an initial ruling, and then only if there's an objection, or, or the Board President could ask for broad consensus or support, that the recusal is, is correct. My question to Administration is, just to double check that this is in keeping with our legal consultation, because I do know that it was just a couple of years ago, in the policy, we made a real change in adjustments in that, to bring it up to date and make it comprehensive. I think this reflects that, I just want to double check that we've, it meets with his review and understanding.
Yes. I'm comfortable that it reflects the earlier revisions on Conflict of Interest.
Great, thank you.
Is there any further board discussion or debate? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote? A yes vote will approve the AR, a no vote will send it back to us for further edits.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Marotti?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Carried.
The next item on our agenda is AR 9311, Board Policies. Board Policies are proposed to be revised, and is before the board for a report from Administration.
Move to approve adoption of AR 9311, Board Policies.
Second.
Thank you.
Let me ask, is there any public testimony on this item? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Ms. Dillard. Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Ms. Dillard?
This is a combination of our administrative regulation 281 and 286. The only change in language is the policy review cycle to align with our new policy platform and numbering. So that would be number three on page two.
Is there any board discussion or debate? Mr. Doran?
On page one, there A2 development, I would suggest that we add after new policies, the words or policy revisions, so that it's clear that if there are new policies or there are revisions that are developed, drafted by the administration, they'll be submitted to the board for approval or for consideration, so it's to add clarity to that.
That was number two on page one, so where it says development, new or revised policies drafted by administration will be submitted to the school.
What I suggested is leaving new policies, but adding or policy revisions, as there are specifically two things. And if I might just, and I looked at other wordings in the, in that section, and I think that's the only place that policy revisions would be appropriate. The rest are like in the title, new policy suggestions, that covers brand-new policies or revisions. So I think it's only in that one place it needs, would add the clarity.
Ms. Dillard, did you need a moment to get your air tamed?
You know, I wasn't planning on air taming everything, it was just the two that had the edits already, but if it would be helpful to the board, I could pull it up.
I'm fine either way, just wanted to make sure if you needed that time. Mr. Burgess?
I support that revision for clarif, because it makes it more clear.
Any other, Ms. Burnett?
So I kind of had a question, under regular policy review. So it says to ensure that policies are updated to meet changing conditions and legal requirements, all policies will be subject to regular review and revision, and then it goes through the procedures. And A says school board initiation and formulation, the school board may initiate policy reviews and evaluations as follows. And then there's nothing. And I don't think that B, C, and D kind of fit in that A category, so I thought maybe that like, that was just, that like, there's either something, there's a chunk of something missing, or that's just laid out, maybe that's a formatting issue. But it feels to me like there's something in there missing.
That's what the policy or the AR looked like, our existing AR looks like that. It is a little interesting how it's formatted, we didn't address any of that when we looked at this in work session. I think it leads to the time restriction, direct consideration, and policy review cycle, however.
So may I?
Follow up?
So, yeah, so as a follow-up, maybe that's a formatting thing then, how we lay that out, and we get rid of the lettering and maybe bullet point it?
Mr. Doran?
I think it's a good catch, and I would just suggest that we delete as follows, because the A is accurate on its own, but it, I would just delete as follows, and then B is accurate on its own, and C, so.
Ms. Burnett?
Yeah, and I'm in favor of that, I just wasn't sure if that it was, that as follows was supposed to lead into something, or, yeah, so I'm in favor of that.
Ms. Marotti?
I recall we talked about ARs and having them come if they impact the board, like from a specific chapter, they come to the board, is that in here somewhere?
That, if, correct me, is in our policy, and then this is just the AR, is why we're going through it right now, is these are ARs that affect the board.
Okay, thanks.
Any further comments? Mr. Doran?
Under D, the policy review cycle, eight is missing. And if I remember Article eight, I think Article eight of, under AASB, does not deal with our type of district, if I remember correctly on that. And I'm just thinking that for somebody reading that and not understanding that, it would be worth a little parentheses. Article eight, you know, somebody looking at it would say, well, wait a minute, you're doing, you do all of them except eight, what's happening to eight? So it might just be a parenthetical, or parentheses type of notation, that eight does not apply to our district or article. I'm not sure exactly the wording, but I'd be comfortable with the administration figuring out, just so if somebody is not looking for it and then saying, oh, wait a minute, why aren't you doing eight?
Yeah, we could definitely add something to that section to designate that Article eight doesn't exist in our policy manual, and is more representative of rural districts in the state.
Is there any further comments on this item? Mr., Mr. Dr. Minor?
Mister is just fine too, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't catch this when we work sessioned it, but I am curious on F, the annual report, the superintendent will submit an annual policy review and evaluation report to the school board, and what the intent behind that would be, and what that would look like, I don't know that, I've seen other superintendents provide that report in the past. And if we're doing and on our review cycle consistently, like how that falls outside of that review cycle?
Mr. Burgess, then Mr. Doran?
Yeah, I'm glad Dr. Minor brought that up, because I was curious about that myself. And my suggestion to maybe help the administration to not overburden them, would be to change this, rather than an annual policy review, change it to, well, we could actually just remove that first sentence, and just keep the language, it says, a superintendent will inform the board about policy review or evaluation needs when they occur. I think it's important that the superintendent has the ability to approach the board when there is something that they notice in policy that maybe isn't working. So keeping that, but doing an annual review when we already have a cycle seems potentially burdensome.
Mr. Doran, then Ms. Marotti?
I don't have any trouble making that section into one sentence as opposed to two, and I do think that evaluation might be misleading there, and not quite appropriate to a policy review. I think it is really helpful to have an annual policy report, review report to the board, simple. And the reason is because the policy review cycle is, says that it will be reviewed, but the board may not know anything about it. The administration would go through and look at it, but where I've seen it helpful, and I will be honest, I don't believe it was done every single year. The intent was there, but I don't believe it was done every year with the board. But when it was done, and having been on a management team, the section was looked at, and most of the things would stay the same, but there'd be maybe a few pulled out. And that was an important report, I thought, to the board, to, and I was sitting out in the audience at that time primarily. But to know what was coming up, okay, in this article, eighty percent of the things don't need any updating, but two, you know, twenty percent need something. You know, one or two of the policies in that, in that article. So I think it is a good thing, it may be a very, very short thing, I don't think it even needs to be written, but I think it should be part of the superintendent being able to say, hey, you know, we looked at Article five, it looks good, but, you know, Article six, we're gonna, there are several items that we're gonna need to look at, and because that also gives an idea for the policy committee, what's going to come up that year as it goes through the administrative process, and then goes to policy committee, and comes to the board. So it helps the board figure out what they're going to have during the year, and there have been times when, based on that, the board had to schedule, I'm thinking of the, some of the discipline-related policies, that we had to schedule in work sessions to facilitate that and to work with administration, so we knew that was a big thing that year. Other years, it was very, very little, relatively little, so I think it is an important thing to have.
Ms. Marotti?
I recall last year, prior to Dr. Minor being our superintendent, the board received a letter from the state saying that we were not in compliance with a policy. And I asked the administration at the time, how did this happen? Why didn't you see this, like, in our policies? And they had no answer, because they weren't reviewing. So I find that this annual report is incredibly important, because it'll prevent that from ever happening again. And I also know that with our subscription to AASB policies, they will let you know when there is a change in policy needed, due to any changes of laws, like what happened last year. And so it would just be a collection of those notices provided to the board. I mean, I would say even more than annually, but that might be a lot of work, so. I do think that we need to keep this, however, I would scratch the word evaluation, I don't think that's something the superintendent needs to be responsible for. But bringing policy changes to the board's attention from AASB is definitely something that we need on this board.
Were you able to capture that?
I heard that for number four, annual report, we're keeping it the same, except for we're taking out the word evaluation. Oh. Oh, policy review report, as opposed to policy review and evaluation report. Yes, thank you.
May I answer? Did you catch the second sentence where it says about policy review evaluation needs when they occur?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Burgess?
Just wanted to thank my fellow board members for that clarification, I think I'm persuaded.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, after, let me clarify, a yes vote will pass this AR on the ASB, and no vote will bring it back to us for more edits. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Carried.
Okay, it is about to be 8:50, the board will auto adjourn in 10 minutes unless the board decides to, what was the new term, suspend the rules. So I wanted to flag that for members, we have two more items, and then our closing. And I had told members in a email that Dr. Minor and I are both supportive of letting things roll to the next agenda, so that we can all get home at a reasonable hour tonight, if that's where people want to go, just flagging for everybody where we're at. Ms. Burnett?
I think we've done some pretty good work through our ARs tonight, I would be in favor of that. We have two first readings that we could put on the agenda of our very next meeting and take that on very first thing, that would just be what I would be in support of.
Mr. Doran?
I'm in favor of suspending the rules and continuing, but I will go with the will of the board. If you want a motion to make that clear, I'm happy to do that.
Go ahead.
Then I'll move to suspend the rules to finish our business.
Second. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote? A yes vote will suspend the rules, and we will continue our work. A no vote will mean that we will adjourn at 9:00 PM, you can't go past it for like, closing comments, that's not considered, we just stop our work by 9:00 PM. Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Colonel Foster?
No.
Colonel Cole?
No.
Ms. Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Burnett?
No.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
No.
Motion carried, or failed, I'm sorry, okay.
At this point, since that motion has failed, I think we should move to closing comments, and know that Article zero and Article one will appear on our agenda at our next regular meeting. I guess we'll start down on the far end, since our military representatives are still here, if they would like to provide any closing comments. Mr. Our Colonel Cole?
Yeah, no comments, thank you.
Colonel Foster?
Yeah, just one comment, first time here, so it was awesome to be a part of this, so look forward to the future engagements, thank you.
Ms. Sanderson?
Just want to wish our students and staff, our community, a good school year.
Ms. Burnett?
Football season's here, I love high school activities. West Valley High School will be taking on Eagle River this Friday, and Lathrup will be taking on Palmer at their respective fields here in town, it's going to be a great weekend, a lot of activities. Just go out and support these kids, because man, are they just doing what they love out there, it's one of my favorite things. Welcome back, students, welcome back educators, welcome back staff and families and everybody, welcome Colonel Foster, welcome Mrs. Charlie. Glad to have you guys here, and just looking forward to a great year.
Ms. Charlie?
Thank you all for having me, I'm so excited to be here, it was a really great first meeting, I am looking forward to the school year and working with all of you, passe.
Ms. Marotti?
Welcome back, students, staff, and families, and thank you to everyone that got out and voted today in the primary. Lastly, we heard some testimony this evening that was harmful, misleading, inaccurate, about queer youth. And I want to provide accurate information from trusted and expert sources on suicide prevention and intervention. The Trevor Project is the primary service provider for specialized crisis services for LGBTQ youth via a nationwide and federally funded suicide and crisis lifeline. They found that LGBTQ young people are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in our society, like we saw earlier this evening. Further, as the prior deputy director of Alaska's statewide suicide and crisis lifeline, I can attest that by affirming the lives of queer youth, and providing a safe environment that honors their identity and their humanity, it does indeed save lives. That being said, if anyone is in crisis, or having thoughts of suicide, or just needs someone to talk to, anyone, especially youth-
someone to talk to, anyone, especially youth from the LGBTQ family, are welcome and encouraged to call 988 to reach the suicide crisis hotline. Thanks.
Mr. Shannon?
I just want to say thank you, everybody. It's a good second meeting. I look forward to the school year. I think it's going to be great. It's going to be a lot of fun, especially with Alison coming over. I, they're already fitting in so well, and I really look forward to this year.
Ms. Maple?
In Dr. Minor's comments, he talked about the jumpstart, maybe it was Dr. Minor, maybe that was Ms. Hardy. President Hardy talked about the jumpstart program, and I, my daughter got to participate in that and discovered, to all of our surprise, that she likes a brand-new instrument that is the trumpet. And without that opportunity, she would not have discovered that. So I'm so grateful to all of the donors that helped make that happen and all of the educators that gave of their time. I also wanted to, over the summer, I got to attend the intercession, right, intercession graduation with Ms. Marotti. It was Mr. Kind's final graduation, and I, it was one of the coolest ceremonies I've been to, the way that each, each graduate was celebrated was pretty remarkable. It was a small group. He didn't prattle on. It was just all about celebrating those, those kids that made it through and got to get their diplomas. And lastly, following up on what Ms. Marotti shared, one of the things that was said earlier tonight was that bullying should never be tolerated. And I fully agree, and I want to be perfectly clear, that if there was any misconception that the things that were said from that podium tonight are anything but bullying, that's wildly inaccurate. The suggesting that LGBTQ youth have something wrong with them, dehumanizing trans kids, suggesting that these are dark lifestyles, to quote, or that they cause mental illness, all of those things are bullying. And I fully agree bullying should never be tolerated. It shouldn't be tolerated from this podium. It certainly wouldn't be tolerated by any of us sitting up here at the dais. And I expect that when people enter these chambers and are given the privilege to speak, that they do not engage in bullying behavior because it's incredibly disappointing knowing that our students, our faculty, our teachers, our educators, our administrators, there are plenty of people that are part of the LGBTQ community that are listening, allies that are listening, and they deserve better. So I hope that moving forward, we'll see better. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
Well, I'll start by saying welcome to our new members. It's great to have you here, Ms. Charlie, Colonel Foster, Mr. Shannon. Welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you. And welcome to the entire community back to school. This has been a good start to the school year. I, you know, my, my kids, I have a freshman at West Valley that's just started this year. He's loving it. The sophomore and junior, they're kind of on the fence right now, but, but I'm excited that they're back in school, and I think that they're, they're going to get excited about their classes. And I just want to thank all of our staff, all the way, the support staff, the teachers, faculty, our administrative staff, for all the hard work that everybody does to really make this school district the best that it can be. I'll just keep my comments in response to testimony brief because it's been covered, but I just want to say that LGBTQ students, I just want to reiterate that they do not suffer because of who they are. They suffer because of a lack of acceptance of who they are by society. Period. And we need to do better. If we want to prevent suicide, we need to show these students and all queer people that they are accepted, that they are valid, and that their lives have the same meaning as any of the rest of us. Misinformation is a word that gets thrown around a lot these days. Sometimes it, real facts, people accuse, you know, throw that around, that word around about real facts. And it's incumbent on us as individuals to sort through that information. So I have a few tips for folks to help them identify misinformation. If, if, if there is emotionally charged language in something that you're reading that is meant to rile you up, if there are vague or inaccurate citations or missing citations, those are some good examples of how you can identify misinformation. If there's a citation that takes you to yet another emotionally charged piece, anything that gets you fearful or angry or anything like that, if there's that intent in the language, that is, there's a good chance that's misinformation. If you want to find facts on, you know, whatever subject it is, from genetics to LGBTQ students to, you know, what time of day it is in, in a different part of the world, look for reputable sources. And you can verify that they're reputable in a lot of different ways. And again, look for those citations that go to actual, hopefully peer-reviewed documents if you're talking about scientific information. And, and, and avoid, avoid forming an opinion when the language is, again, vague or emotionally charged. So that's just some tips that I learned in school, and I hope that everyone takes that to heart when they're looking, when they're trying to determine what is information and what is misinformation. And again, welcome back, everybody. It's good to be here, and hopefully this will be a great school year.
Mr. Doran?
I've got several things, and I'll start off by saying thank you to my board colleagues for their comments. And want to recognize what a great way to start out the school year. It was great to be among the positive picketers and to watch teachers and other educators walk into airing auditorium and really noticing how their faces lit up as they went through the, the picketing line. I always get a kick out of those who are trying to be very serious. You know, my first public day, you know, they had worked at school the day before, but now they're coming to the official opening celebration. And, and then all of a sudden, they'd break into a laugh or a smile or something and receive somebody online, and there'd be hugs going back and forth. And then inside in the lobby to watch them greet each other was a big thing. So my kudos to the administration for pulling together a very good, real celebration, but also very good information for all of us. And then the ability, I had the opportunity to be at Denali, to be out in front and help welcome parents and children as they were coming in. And I know this was going on at schools across the district. You mentioned the UAF Nanook athletes. There were several there, and they were, they had been at another school before, and they were going to another school afterwards. And other athletes scattered throughout our district, I think, as you mentioned, really did a lot of things. The other thing I wanted to mention, because even it came up recently in conversation, there's often a concern about overhead in our district and central office administration. And I want to point out that how nice it was to see administrative center staff out at the schools. I got to see them coming to Denali. I also saw them going out to other places, and I saw our schedules, and even departments were closed. We're closed for these, you know, human resources for two hours, so we can be out there. And I think that's something that really needs to be recognized, too. Thank you all, because it's not that you are avoiding work. You're setting work to do later in the day. And it's part of, we've had lots of reductions in admin staff, as we have had in schools, but everyone is pitching in for students and to try and make things work as well as possible. So I want to also, I think that's important for our community to know that admin staff is, is getting out to schools, looking at where they can help out, but also filling in vacancies. So thank you for that. Something that struck me with the consent agenda, particularly this year, quite a number of fundraising, not just for activities, but also for supplies. These, in lots of ways, are basic budget items that we should be able to fund. But both supply budgets and activity budgets were cut in light of the lack of funding for public education and the shortage of that funding. We appreciate every dollar we get, but it is having an impact when we do not get an additional permanent, long-term investment in public education. And that really struck me. We're asking our community to step up, to fill those gaps. And the thing is that we know they will do that, but we have to keep that in mind as we move forward and advocate for public education in the upcoming legislative session and with the elections going on, that you ask each candidate, no matter where they're from, whatever their perspective, ask them what they're willing to do to support our students, to invest in public education. As the superintendent was giving kind of an overview of class sizes, and we know we have spots, and we know we've gotten information that some of it is due to vacancies that we have. As Ms. Peterson testified tonight, you know, talking about teachers stepping up and meeting them, it has struck me, as I've talked to several retirees who are saying, oh, yeah, I'm back. I'm doing a long-term sub. What a wonderful thing. Our district would be in such a world of hurt if we did not have our retirees stepping up and helping to fill some of these gaps to the extent possible. And then I really want to point out the emergency certified folks and give a pitch to everybody out there. If you've ever thought you might like to try teaching, this is what a wonderful opportunity to get your feet wet and your toe in the door as an emergency cert. Get to know kids. They are wonderful. And I would say, I was a late bloomer into education, and so, in a sense, would have been one of those probably emergency certs. But at the time, but after 40 years, I am so glad that that was the career I chose and have been part of. And so it's an opportunity for us to, as a district, to really gain new recruits and that those of us who know what it is to, the joys of being a teacher, an educator, to help instill that joy in our emergency certs so that we can fill our ranks. And so if you're out there, have any interest, check in with the district, with HR, and we'll see whether we can put you to work. The strategic planning, I just wanted to comment on and encourage everybody in our community to take part in it. This is a really important process, but the value of it is to get the whole community involved. And so your input, your thoughts on what you would like to have for our children, for our students, is extremely important in our planning to the future and for our, both advocating and using responsibly the resources of staff, of finances, and of facilities. So your voice is extremely important. I encourage everyone to follow this closely and to participate. And finally, just want to express a concern. I am very aware and want to be respectful of, we all have different schedules and, and times to be at work, times to take care of family and such. But I will express a concern that as we go through setting our agendas, et cetera, my concern is that there will be some nights we're going to go later. If we keep pushing off the work, it just makes the next meeting longer. And we saw that happen last spring. I, hopefully that as we go into the fall, we do, there'll be times when we're going to have to just roll up our sleeves, and, and that may not be tonight. I don't know people's circumstance, so I'm not trying to judge people that way. But I think that we need to keep that in mind, that we, as one of our members often said, that we do the work. And I think it's, it's really important that we keep that in mind and we don't let it pile up and then catch us later on. So with that, that's my comments.
I will keep it very brief. Thank you to our education staff and the board and everyone for the work tonight. And I will just say, I don't think anyone up here is not fully committed to doing the work. Many of us have schedules and children to get up in the morning, and I think it is a responsible decision for this board to try to get its work done effectively, efficiently, and allow people to get to bed at reasonable times, especially those who, the majority of the board, have jobs that they need to report to, oftentimes early in the morning. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.